Oh, yeah.
It's the drugs.
Oh. Okay. We called order at five thirty-five. Please stand.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our public members, please.
Councilmember Southway here. Councilmember Maury.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter.
Here.
Supervisor Drumbley.
Here.
Thank you. Did you get those couple of corrections out? Okay, so I approve the motion to approve the minutes. What kind of discussion have we been in for? That's the minutes from the April ninth business meeting, by the way.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the copies you have don't have the corrections. There's a couple of graphical errors that we took care of. I think it was on page two.
Is it?
Two and seven. Favor. Mind if I take a breath this stuff? Okay. All in favor approving as presented with the corrections?
Aye.
Aye.
They oppose. Motion carries. Now we'll welcome a motion to recess from this meeting and enter into public hearing. Was that advertised for five?
Right off, yep.
Right off, right? I thought. So we will enter into a public hearing to conduct state environmental review for proposed fitness court and pickleball court at Bob Van Park.
I'll make a motion to exit the regular meeting and enter to the public hearing to conduct the state environmental review for proposed fitness court and pickleball court at Bob Van Park.
Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We oppose. Okay, public hearing is now open. So we will go into the secret document. You all have a copy of part one, which is empty. Remember what we do. I left you a second set because number eleven and seventeen, I had previously corrected based on feedback. I think it was based on feedback from Matt Fabro and also Chris Mottat, but the I failed to print it to get the correct document out to you. It wasn't Julie's error, it was mine, but luckily, Dorothea picked up on those two spots as well and reviewed it, but I don't know why. So as you can see, eleven and seventeen, I now correctly filled out.
Eleven is no.
Yes, whatever is no.
Seventeen.
Seventeen A.
A.
Maybe A.
Yep.
The one A.
There are two, I guess.
Seventeen A? Yes, seventeen B.
You did have corrected, I think, but aren't these the corrected version?
Yeah, that's correct.
So this is a corrected version.
They weren't putting it on the desk.
Correct. That June, that June.
I put it on your desk when you came.
Yeah, yeah, so that's seventeen B is a yes.
Okay, so here's the signed copy of part one. I can tell I changed the date and the night. I had data tonight. So now we'll go down through part two, step by step. So do I have to do? We've already had that motion. We've already had the last one. Enter all the following questions in part two using the information contained in part one and other materials submitted by the project sponsor, which are otherwise available to reviewers. In answering the questions, reviewers should be guided by the concept, have my responses been reasonable considering the scale and context of proposed action? Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Answers no. Correct? No, agree?
Correct.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No, it should improve it. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environment, environmental area? Again, no. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkout? Again, no. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable, reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Again, no. Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies? No. And B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Both no. Correct? Stop me if you disagree with anything.
So you see there, you don't think there will be an additional use for water for wastewater treatment?
The port-a-pots currently will be taken care of.
Well, currently, under this project, no. There's no, there's no facilities going in.
Okay.
And if we need more, you know, bathrooms, we've got you add a port-a-pot. They've been very good about.
Since there's no wastewater there?
Right.
My guess is if we ever put a enclosed facility, it would probably be a I'm gonna call it a fancy port-a-pot, but it's going to be a contained unit that would be pumped out routinely.
Okay.
They have some of the rest areas, New York State Rest Area.
Correct.
Yeah, and somebody I talked to about this whole project had recommended that. I don't remember if it was an engineer or who it was, but.
Okay, so now to both of seven.
Yeah, the other thing at the very top where it says no, it also suggests that there might be a small impact may occur. So it's not total no all the time.
That is true.
It's a small impact, but with that regard, number seven, it doesn't apply anyway.
Yep, that is true. Thanks, Dorothea. Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological? Archaeological, there we go. Architectural or aesthetic resources? No.
So there is no portion of that I am.
Which has now been approved by Chippewa.
Okay.
That has been reviewed by Chris and Chippewa and approved.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying no. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? No. And I probably should have printed a copy of that email that I received with the approval, so we would have had that material in front of me. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No.
The land is tiled, so.
It is, and it, you know, it's also, it's also ditched. When we start actually excavating, maybe we'll determine we have to get permission from the state to adjust the ditching, maybe have them, but I think it's fine the way it is.
Right.
Even if it did, as Dorothea pointed out, it would probably be a very small impact, but I don't think it's going to be a problem at all. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources and human health? No. Page two is just so page two would be to explain any questions on page one that wouldn't have been answered moderate to large impact, which would end none.
You just need to.
The rest is we're just, we just need to fill this out.
Check this out.
Well, you need to, if everybody agrees with part two, then a negative. Which is resolution forty-four.
Right.
Which would be the second box for one thing.
Yeah.
Which is, we have determined based on the information analysis above that the proposed action will not result in a significant adverse environmental impacts, because they were all answered no. That'll have to be filled out. Do you put the name of the project up here and today's date? It's evidence of order.
No, this is that we have that.
That doesn't have to be. So I'm gonna leave you with the original. That's just town machine. Okay. So we have no, no one from the public here for the public hearing. We should completed the secret and we should go back to the regular session to complete the resolution to negative.
Yeah, we're in the public hearing, negative.
Okay, we can do twenty-four. Okay, we'll check it out right here then. Okay, so based on that review, resolution number twenty-four of twenty twenty-four, State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, adopting negative declaration in relation to the Bob Van Outdoor Fitness Court and Pickleball Court project. Whereas the Town of Champlain is constructing an outdoor fitness court and pickleball court within the town's Bob Van Park. And whereas this project is type-one action within the meaning of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And whereas, based on its consideration of the proposed project, its review of the environmental assessment form, and all other supporting information submitted in connection with the proposed project. And the criteria set forth in Title Six of New York Codes, Rules and Regulations, N Y C R R. Subsection six one seven point seven. The Town of Champlain Town Board as lead agency has identified and analyzed the relevant areas of environmental concern to determine whether the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact, impact on the environment. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Champlain Town Board hereby finds and determines that the proposed project will not have any significant adverse impacts on the environment. And therefore, issues a negative declaration of environmental significance pursuant to SECR for the reasons set forth in the attached part two of the E A F, of which is incorporated herein by reference, and the reading of all of which are waived. And we can do a vote, correct? Motion to approve resolution number twenty-four is read?
I'll make that.
Right.
Second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's no further discussion, correct? Okay, resolution passed. Got a copy, right? Okay, now I'd like to move a motion to end the public hearing. And re-enter into the special meeting.
I'll make a motion that we re-enter into the regular meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. There is nobody from the public here. The presentations are dismissed. I am foregoing a report at this meeting to try and prove them wrong. All agree with the same? Okay, so we'll go into new business. Which will start off with resolution twenty-five. To set a public hearing for proposed rehabilitation of forty Miramar Drive. Whereas the Town of Champlain is applying for grant funding under round eight of Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. With plans of demolition of one vacant structure in the Town of Champlain. And whereas the proposed project area is comprised of one parcel of land located at forty Miramar Drive, tax parcel number eighteen dot dash one dash fifty. And whereas the Restore New York Communities Initiative provides municipalities with financial assistance for revitalization of commercial and residential properties. And now therefore be it resolved that a public hearing be held by this town board on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven ten P M with respect to public comment on the proposed demolition of one one hundred and twenty thousand square foot vacant Miramar Factory Outlet Center located at forty Miramar Drive. And therefore, be it further resolved that the town clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause all required public notices of said hearings to be given as provided by law. Motion to approve is, is read?
I make motion that we approve as read, resolution number twenty-five.
I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I just want to add, I saw Calvin's video and that place is a disaster.
Very sad.
It's a disaster.
Have you seen it?
I saw the video.
Yeah. I know. It's, it was probably a good twenty, twenty-five percent worse this year than I went there compared to when I was there last year. It's amazing what's been done this past year. So based on the safety, if we don't bring this grant and get this thing demolished in some other form, I don't know how they're gonna do this, but it, we better secure it and the cost of that is, is very high. It's, it's a lot of building to try to secure. And how well we'll get secure. But it is in bad shape. I mean, when I, when I did the, the interview, it was pouring rain, so we had to get underneath the
Hiding.
The hiding. I was actually a little worried. There's big chunks of ceiling that have been down already and holes all over the place.
Yeah, it's not gonna get any better. It's just eventually just gonna collapse. This is one try at getting it rehabilitated. I mean, not rehabilitated, but something there.
It'll allow, yeah, it'll allow to rehabilitate property.
It's a nice spot. It's a nice location, but if something has to be done before anybody will do something.
And as Calvin pointed out, that is the first thing that folks see when they come south from that border.
Correct. And of course, we're aware, you know, why we weren't chosen last time, so.
Right.
And I think that's kind of, you know, good to be a better advantage this time around.
And one of them is post it for three days.
Correct.
Yep, it's three days. Okay. So next would be resolution number twenty-six of twenty twenty-four. So here's a notice of public hearing. So this, this is what you need to put on the paper. Do you have a copy of that? Again, please post for three. So it's very unusual. It's probably, we'd never do that. And the three-day limit, by the way, is not criteria for the public hearing itself. It's criteria for the
New York communities?
No, the supporting documentation, I believe it's called. They are. No. So the document that has to be filled out as part of the application, that has to be posted in the I don't know what it is. We'll get to it in the end. I'm gonna get through in a while. But anyways, that's the one that has that criteria. So we did both together under one public hearing. So those both we done for three days. So resolution number twenty-six. Municipal resolutions supporting the Town of Champlain Rehabilitation Project and corresponding Restore New York Grant Application. Whereas the Town of Champlain is interested in promoting community and economic development, historic preservation, vacancy reduction, talent revitalization, revitalization, sorry, small business development, and neighborhood stability. And whereas the Town of Champlain is eligible for grant funding on a round eight of the Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program. And whereas the Town of Champlain has evaluated properties that qualify for funding under the program and selected one project to be included in an application that will be submitted to Empire State Development Corporation, E S D C. And whereas the Town of Champlain supports the demolition of the Miramar Factory Outlet Center consistent with all existing town planning. And whereas the proposed financing is appropriate for a demolition project, it poses no burden, imposes no burden on the town. And whereas the project facility facilitates effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources. So as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources. And whereas the project develops and enhances infrastructure and other facilities in a manner that will attract, create, sustain employment opportunities. And now, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Champlain Board, the Town Board hereby supports, excuse me, and will sponsor an application for Restore New York Round Eight Funding for the demolition of Miramar Factory Outlet Center at forty Miramar Drive. And will administer the grant in accordance with all applicable rules and regulations established by E S D C. Motion to approve resolution number twenty-six. Make a motion that we approve, resolution number twenty-six is read?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We oppose. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the council retainer letter for the bond with attorney Theodore Trespass. We all had time to review this. What I'm looking for is your approval to sign in this agreement. Now, if you have any further questions, but the, I think that I was clear in the emails when he sent it out, I hope I was. This is one of the steps or one of the ducks to get in a row for the, for the Bartolomeo Judas to apply for, I believe it's a W O Q I P. The grant that we applied for last year where we didn't have everything in line. And we didn't get awarded. They're reapplying for it, and this is one of the items that we need to echo very long reform in the district. Actually, when we form a district, we probably should have did this at that same time. The law office that was chosen was, what I did was I emailed Matt Fabro and asked for a recommendation. This is who he recommended. He has worked with them before, I think for the Town of Peru. And they're also, they have worked with Bartolomeo Judas in the past as well, so that's how we, that's how we chose this office. So we welcome the motion to, to sign this. And as you know, this is just more or less a placeholder. This, this, the bond resolution, this, this contract with bond counsel. This is only required if we re, we receive all the funding we need and if we borrow the money out to move forward from E S C or whoever. And in a bond council, basically to make sure that everything is being done properly and all the eyes are down and the t's across, town's protected. And there is a cost once, if we get to that point, as you're aware, you've been through this before, Brian, and all that. But it comes out of the, the funding that you, you get for a project.
These are the ones where my eyes get big when I read the amounts, but I remember with the water project that there was similar fees and you can check a lot of bond councils and the prices are all in that same ballpark. They're, they're very limited.
There's not, there's, they're very limited to begin with. There's not
There's not a lot of.
A lot of offices that provide this.
And they charge what the market will bear and, you know, like a lot of things, you just have to rent and bear it because it's part of the project and that's what you're gonna have to pay to get the bond, to borrow the money for the bonds.
Yeah, like you, as you know, that's why we're doing this. You won't even get the points to score, to get awarded the grants if you don't have these things all at once.
And if they make a mistake, you're in big trouble, so you need a good bond counsel. If they make a mistake, that you can't borrow. You do it wrong. So you want to make sure you get a good company.
Right. So this, this contract doesn't bind us to.
Not, not unless something happens. Not unless we get the funding.
Correct. Correct. So with that said, we have approval to we're gonna sign on page two.
The retainer letter. That's what I say, so. I'd like to give permission for our town supervisor to sign the bond counsel retainer letter.
Right.
As presented. Resolution number twenty-seven. As part of the.
Oh, it's not really a.
Yeah.
Well, it's separate from that. We'll do it after that next.
It's the retainer fees.
Yeah. Okay, so just get, well, do you need to even sign this? It doesn't have a spot for you to sign.
Yeah, page two.
I see it. Okay, now I, okay.
So the motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Can we do rule call on this one, please?
Councilmember Southway?
Aye.
Councilmember Maury? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Supervisor, oop, councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Supervisor Drumbley?
Aye.
Could use the whistle hammer. Okay, thank you. I'll look at that. I hope Mr. Trespass tomorrow. Item number five is resolution number twenty-seven of twenty twenty-four. It's bond resolution of the Town of Champlain. Bond resolution of the Town of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, adopted on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Authorizing the establishment of the Town of Champlain Sewer District number seven at an estimated maximum cost of eleven million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Appropriating said amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of up to eleven million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars of bond anticipation notes and serial bonds. of bond anticipation notes and serial bonds of the town to pay the cost of the project. Please let me note that that is a total amount without funding. So we're not moving forward. I don't want the public to think that we're moving forward with that amount. That is to cover it fully under this, under this bond resolution. Special meeting of Town Board of the Town of Champlain, Clinton, County of Clinton, New York, was held at Town of Champlain Town Hall, one oh seven two nine Route Nine, Champlain, New York, at five thirty P M on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. There were present the board members, Thomas Trombley Supervisor, Brian Moore Counselperson, Jason Borey Counselperson, Rick Hunter Counselperson, and Dorthea Southwick Counselperson. There were none absent and also present was Julie Castide, Town Clerk. So the following resolution is offered by. That would be a first, please, for the floor.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Okay.
Resolution twenty-seven.
To move its adoption, okay?
Yeah.
And seconded by?
I'll second.
Okay. Just to establish. Too late. Okay. And what I'm gonna do is, because this is a long resolution.
Long.
Yeah, I'm gonna read just page two and then all these sections. There are a lot of fluff. To those of you who are wondering why I'm not, it's very long. It will be posted within the minutes. You can review it. And then we'll, uh, we'll go to the last, to page number six, okay?
I'll shoot.
That's it. So whereas section.
Will you also summarize the bond resolution on that last page, Matt?
Uh, seven?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's seven.
Six.
Nine?
Yeah, I think it's nine.
Is it nine?
Yes. Just, just for the public, please.
Yes and no.
Is that actually a case?
I think it's page eight, but. I've got like a reprint, so. Do you have two of these pages?
Yeah, there's a reprint.
There is a reprint.
No, what it is, I'll tell you what the reprint is. Okay, so that page eight is literally what's gonna go in the paper. That following page is for Julie to, to post in the press.
Okay.
Okay.
So what I'm asking then is that summary of the bond resolution on page eight?
Yep, I will read that as well.
Please.
Thank you. Okay. So now, whereas section sixty-four three of the Town Law of the State of New York empowers the Town Board of the Town of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, the town, to manage, maintain and control town properties as the purposes of the town may require. And whereas the town has pursuant to the Town Law created the Town of Champlain Sewer District Number Seven, the District. And whereas the Town Board of the town is determined that is necessary and desirable for the town to undertake a project consisting of the increase and improvement, acquisition and construction of improvements to the district. Including but not limited to the installation of approximately thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety linear feet of sewer force main and related low-pressure sewer collection facilities which will convey flows to the existing Village of Rosas Point wastewater treatment plant as set forth in the map, plan and report of the proposed sewer district number seven. Facilities prepared by Barton and the Judas, D P C. The map, plan and report, the project, and whereas the town as a local agency pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, C R A, E C L Section eight dash zero one zero one in implementing Regulations Six, N Y C R R, Part six one seven, the regulations. Having reviewed the impact of the acquisition and construction of the sewer system improvements comprising the project upon the environment, has determined by resolution adopted July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three that the project is a type-one action that will not result in any significant adverse impacts to the environment. And whereas upon completion of the map, plan and report for the project, the Town Board, in accordance with Town Law Section two oh two dash B, called for a public hearing to consider the increase and improvement of facilities of the district at a maximum estimated cost of eleven million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to be held on August eighth, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen P M at the Town of Champlain Town Hall for the purpose of hearing public comments thereon. And whereas said order was published and posted as prescribed and required by Town Law, which order contained a description of the project and specified that the estimated maximum cost thereof to be eleven million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And whereas the Town Board conducted said public hearing on August eighth, twenty twenty-three to hear comments from all persons interested in the subject matter thereof and discuss if the project is in the best interests of the town. And whereas the Town Board determined by resolution adopted August eighth, twenty twenty-three that the increase and improvement of the facilities of the district is in the public interest and now desires to authorize the acquisition, construction and equipping, equipping of the project and the financing of the costs thereof. Now therefore be it resolved on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four by the Town Board of the Town of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, by favorable, favor of a vote of not less than two-thirds of said board as follows. And this is the following sections. We have reviewed and will be posted, will review for anyone else. And now we will go to page six. Wherefore the foregoing resolution was put to vote of the members of the Town Board of the town this April ninth. Oop, there's a, I'm making a hand change to this, April thirtieth, to typo, I'm sorry. The result of which vote was as follows. Do you wanna do a little call following it, please?
Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Borey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Councilmember Southwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Trumbullay?
Aye.
Thank you. Date is April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Certificate, uh, this would be for, for you to read, Julie, if you, if you would.
By the undersigned Town Clerk of the Town of Champlain, Clinton County, State of New York, hereby certify that I have compared next exact of the minutes of the special meeting of the Town Board of said town including the resolution contained therein, held on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four with the original thereof filed in my office and that same is a true, complete and correct copy thereof and of the whole of said original minutes so far as the same relates to the subject matters therein referred to. I further certify that all members of the Town Board had due notice of said meeting. I further certify the pursuit to Section one oh three of the Public Officers Law, Open Meetings Law. Proper notice was given relative to said meeting and said meeting was open to the general public. I further certify that prior to, to the time of said meeting, I do will cause a public notice of the time and place of said meeting to be given to the following newspapers and/or other news media as follows. Press Republican Newspaper.
No, it was supposed to, I think that's the date that has to go in there.
Of this week?
At this meeting. At this meeting, I think it has to go in there.
April thirtieth?
It'll probably be May first because you're gonna send it in tomorrow, correct?
Well, it'll be probably the third.
Yeah, by the time.
By the time it hits there.
Okay, so it'll be.
Be May third, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay. Right? Just a little bit.
I further certify that prior to the time of said meeting, I do will cause public notice of the time and place of said meeting to be, what is it, cons?
Conspicuously.
Posted in the following designated public locations on the following dates. Town Sign Board, Town Hall and the Town Website. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand, affixed a corporate seal of the Town of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, this thirtieth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, so we'll have to put this notice on the website.
So that's not on the website yet, so it's gotta go out tomorrow.
Yeah, that's gonna be prior to. This, this and the whole resolution, am I reading it correctly?
I think it's just this. Is all of it going on?
I would put this as well.
Okay.
I don't think it would hurt to do that, but yeah.
No, I think the transparency, I just didn't know if it required all of it.
Yeah, this is actually, so this is page eight of it. And like I said, this is just the one to go to, it's a duplicate to go to the paper. I would put all eight pages on the website.
No, all of it, I think all of it has to go in press too.
We'll have to confirm.
I'm pretty sure, because the last time I think we put everything in, because it was a large notice.
And I thought it was just this. I didn't confirm that morning. I'll call the attorney, see if I can reach him. So I thought it was just this notice. Okay, and then, thank you, Julie. Summary of the bond resolution. A resolution adopted by the Town Board of the Town of Champlain, Clinton County, New York, the town, on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four authorizes a project consisting of the increase and improvement, acquisition and construction of sewer system improvements for the Town of Champlain Sewer District Number Seven. Including but not limited to the installation of approximately thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety linear feet of sewer force main and related low-pressure sewer collection facilities which will convey flows to the existing Village of Rosas Point wastewater treatment plant. All as set forth in the map, plan and report, the project. And authorize the levy of a tax for the foregoing object or purpose in an amount not to exceed eleven million dollars, three hundred and seventy thou, eleven million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, excuse me. Which shall be levied and collected in annual installments in such years and in such amounts as may be determined by the Town Board. And that in anticipation of the collection of such tax, bonds and notes of the town are authorized to be issued at one time or from time to time in the principal, principal amount not to exceed eleven million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And a tax is authorized to pay the interest on said obligations when due. There shall be annually apportioned and assessed upon the several lots and parcels of land within the district which the Town Board shall determine and specify to be especially benefited by the project. An amount sufficient to pay the principal and interest on such obligations as the same become due, but if not paid from such source, all of the taxable real property in the town shall be subject to the levy of ad valorem taxes without limitation as to rate or amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds as the same shall become due. Under the local finance law, the project has a period of probable usefulness of forty years. A complete copy of the resolution summarized herewith is available for public inspection during the normal business hours for twenty days from the date of publication of this notice. Okay. So Julie, we'll have to get in there tomorrow and we'll, okay. Mr. Trespass on the phone, let me make sure we do that correctly, right?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, item six. This is, uh, I had sent it, I'm pretty sure I sent you guys an email or a text kind of explaining what we're looking at here. So this is a rider of liability to cover our service that we provide, cover our notary, the Republic. Because we have learned that she could, you know, be subject to liability depending on what documents have been put in front of her. Because we have a lot of outside of the town folks that'll use that service. Our, I put it by our attorney, and he said for the low cost of this extra liability coverage, it'd be crazy not to do it. He said because technically, she should be, any of our residents, she would be covered under our, our current umbrella of liability. Because there's always that little something that could come out and cause a problem. So he recommended, when I put this in an email to him and told what the cost was, his words were, for that low cost, you need to do it. And the cost is, uh, what?
Seven sixty-one.
Seven sixty-one.
So are we gonna pay this in one payment, I hope?
Yeah.
And not spread it?
Correct.
Because even if you got a two-payment, you're spending an extra twenty percent?
No, correct. It would be a little payment. But it's just something that we discovered.
And Julie doesn't have to worry about that because she's not technically notary, but she can notarize certain town documents. Is that how it works, Julie?
What marriages and things, how's that work?
But she's, you're bonded for that to the town.
Because I only use like the town seal.
Right. So she's bonded for those documents and bonded for handling the, the money that she handles that comes in and out of here. So it's kind of separate.
Yeah, she's not doing, uh, notary for anybody outside the area of the town.
Correct. So if you've all been trying to review it, I'd welcome approving of it so we can get our coverage started. Uh, this is through our, our current carrier.
I'll make a motion that we approve the notary public professional liability quote from the Hartford in the annual premium amount of seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I'll second. Thank you. Any further discussion? Could you roll call this?
Councilmember South, Southwick?
Aye.
Councilmember Borey?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Supervisor Trumbullay?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, um, you all have copies of the resolutions. I don't wanna read them. These are going to be read at the banquet for the fire department. This is honoring two of the volunteers for thirty years of service. We've all had, all I, all I would like is a, to put it on record, of course, that we approved the resolution as, as written. Should be doing separate, are you okay doing it together?
If we can do it together, uh, first of all.
Yeah, if you go, I don't know.
Separate.
So let's, so the first, the first one is Resolution number twenty-eight of twenty twenty-four. Honoring Mr. Donald Diesel for thirty years of service to the Rosas Point Fire Department, Montgomery Holes Hook and Ladder Company Number One Incorporated. So by order of the Town Board, do we approve said resolution?
No, maybe I won't.
Okay, thank you. I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next would be Resolution number twenty-nine of twenty twenty-four. Honoring Mr. Michael LeBlanc for thirty years of service to the Rosas Point Fire Department, Montgomery Holes Hook and Ladder Company Number One Incorporated. Again, I would welcome a motion to approve said resolution as written.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-nine.
I'll second that. Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries, thank you, so I'll pass it around. So outside, please use that same pen. Okay. Moving right along. So, under old business now, the revision of chapter seventeen of town code is still a responsibility. Though I have not gotten to it yet. Uh, actually, the code I've been working on, which I think we need to add to old business, Julie, for the next meeting, so it's listed properly, is, um, we found that there was a revision required to chapter, chapter one twenty-four water that we just revised. You, Brian and Chris and I worked on that a little bit.
Yes.
And then we all took it back to our desk or back home. I've gone through it, Brian, I'm just about done with it, I think we can just add definitions.
Which were, yeah, which needed to be done because they were different definitions.
Yeah, so to give the rest of you a quick explanation of what it is, within that huge code, we refer to water operators, superintendent of consolidated water, uh, the town, town employee, and all these things. So when you get to the, we had to do a new service hookup, uh, very recently, within the past couple of weeks, that's what brought this up. Who installs the equipment, who installs the meter? In the way, as written today, only the, I can't remember if that one was water operator or superintendent of consolidated water, but whichever it was, it was Chris and Chris only. So it doesn't allow us the freedom to hire someone if Chris isn't available, or appoint the town, someone from the village. It really binds us to, Chris has to be the guy to do it. And so during our large revision last year, we never saw that, because we weren't addressing it that way, right?
Yeah.
And I hope that we, we don't find something else someday. But I've been through it, and I'm almost done, I just wanna go back through one more time. But I think, Brian, if we add definition to, you know, town water operator, town employee, and make sure that they all, you know, mean the same, and add the words, in one section it actually adds the words, or any approved designee or something like that.
Yeah, and that was a big problem.
Sorry.
And that was a big problem, because
Yeah.
there wasn't no, uh, no, there wasn't any delegation. We couldn't get someone who wasn't in the code to do it unless, well, unless nothing. There, there was no way to designate someone else to do it if someone wasn't available.
Right, so just to let you know how it all worked out, Rick and, and Jason Borthea, is, we purchased all the parts, all the plumbing, which is a lot of plumbing to be done, you know, there's these meter horns that we put in, the pressure-reducing valve, all this stuff. I consulted with the town of Plasberg, ah, you don't get my message. I consulted with the town of Plasberg, and, um, we did, and it followed our code. It didn't, it didn't contradict our code in any way. I followed suit of what they do. They give the parts to the homeowner and/or contractor, and say, get these installed, call us back, and we'll come put the meter in and turn the water on. That's exactly what we did. And the homeowner was capable himself, and he's built his own house, he's capable of putting it in, so he just installed everything. Called Chris, Chris went down and inspected it. Yep, inspected it, put the meter in place. Uh, there is a program that has to be done by the village, but they can do it when they go through their meter reading. They'll, they'll kill those two birds with one stone. So now we kinda have a process.
Yeah.
So, that needs to be finished, so I'd like to have it under old business. The other one is review of quotes for cemetery services. I have, the only, he sent me a new one, the only thing he changed was, if you look at your quote, he has details, remove six fallen and leaning monuments off the ground, and remove six sunken monument bases and repair. I don't think that that number was in the first quote, if I remember correctly. Other than that, it's identical. We will, uh, provide topsoil and two tons of under-two stone and one ton of under-one stone for him. And we will be giving him someone to work with him, and hopefully learn this as well, because I'm gonna let Brian take over now, there aren't many people who do this.
Uh, yes, I, I thought there would be a few companies that did this, but apparently, uh, local cemeteries just have somebody like on, on call, a volunteer, or someone, uh, like, like Plasberg Monument, uh, who, who just go in and do one, one gravestone. And that's it. They don't, there was no one I was able to find, uh, that did general, uh, cemetery repair work. You know, like that would go through the cemetery and put all the monuments up, and, and I think that's what, uh, this individual was found at, there was a niche there. Who could come in and help repair parts of the cemetery. Currently, uh, they out, they, they need two people, they need heavy equipment, because those monuments are heavy gravestones. They're heavy, and I mean, I've given up trying to move them, you know, just to move them out of the way or something. You don't even get there, so you usually have to have heavy machinery, and you need a second person to guide, at minimum. It's a lot of time and effort, and I could not find another place. I, I called a couple of churches and said, what do you do while they go, you know, the person responsible for the individual grave, the owner usually does it. In our case, you know, our, our, our people are, you know, a hundred years since there's been someone involved with that grave, so, uh, we're, we're kind of stuck dealing with repair. Especially according to the town law, that, you know, we are responsible for the cemeteries. And I, I think we would be, we're doing a grave disservice if we don't start fixing them up.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna take some time.
Two, two hundred.
Chip away.
Two hundred plus year-old stone, gravestones, headstones that are falling apart, and that are part of the town history. You know, early settlers, uh, early farmers. And this is a small, small thing to, to try and get our way into it. And you can see how he does, uh, I, I, and I don't know what the alternative is at this point, I really checked in, I made a lot of calls, and there's nobody who does it. They usually put it on the individual who owns the grave, but that's great for the current operating cemeteries, but ours are abandoned and older and, you know.
So, you know, I share all the
The specifications, yes.
Specifications of, of how, how these things are put together. I believe I sent you his photographs and stuff, that he had taken, that he had did. So, it's interesting, because when you see a, a flat stone sticking out of the ground, or leaning, or maybe falling over, there's always, typically always a base underneath it, in the ground, it has sunk over the years.
I, I, the foundation, I mean, the, the way I'm familiar with it is, the foundation is what's in the ground.
Uh, he calls it a, uh?
Yes, I, I know, he, he calls it differently.
Okay.
The base, he calls it the base, but it's, sometimes, the newer stones, they have a concrete base on top of the foundation, which is movable. Gets hit by a, a mower, or vandalism, or whatever, it moves, it doesn't crack. And then into that, uh, base goes the headstone. And, and some are done differently, and, and everything, sometimes the, the headstone.
Well, that's kind of what this is, it's just that it's in the ground now.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, his repair is done, uh, differently, yeah. Everything changes with time, and they have new ways of doing things, and, uh, he, he has some new, you know, technology, quote-unquote, that will work. And he showed us that stuff, the material he uses, and, you know.
So, so essentially, we, we have, what we'd like to do, is we have enough funds budgeted that we budgeted this past fall, we budgeted five thousand dollars to try and start chipping at this. If we wanted to fix a whole cemetery at one time, it's probably two to forty thousand dollars. So, we gotta chip away at it. In addition to that, we've got a couple of people that volunteered to try to help, so we can probably pull up some of the stones from the bank that have been, that are broken, try to, try to see if we can at least display them together. We probably won't be able to afford to glue them and stuff, but, uh, because he has a process where he does that. It's a epoxy, he glues them together, then he mixes a mixture of epoxy and whatever material the monuments may have, grater, or marble stone, whatever it is, and it fills the crack. But we'd like to, to authorize forty-five hundred, I have, you know, put letters out looking for some donation if possible. Um, I, I didn't get anything, there's nothing available for the Historical Society of Clinton County. But if we do get additional funds, we could possibly do one more. If we don't, we'll stick with six, and then we'll tackle some more next year. I mean, as least, as long as we try.
So is the priority given to those stones that are in poor or worse conditions? How do we choose those six, I guess is the question I have.
They're, they're all fallen over.
And, and broken.
And the base is broken or something?
Sunk in.
Yeah, if you can find it, sometimes.
Yeah, you'll have to dig to find it.
Oh, yeah.
But that's how we chose those six. And if I remember right, there's about six more, I think it's about a dozen total that are in that condition.
Okay.
And then there's another, probably ten that are leaning, which would be the next ones we'd have to address, just try and straighten them up.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, so leaning like this, they're, they're still in the foundation of the base, they're still attached. But you also have a problem, sometimes somebody on the mower can, you can hit it, you're going straight ahead, and you go around it a little bit, and you don't realize your motor's sticking out this far, and you nail it, you know, the more
For touch of it.
Yeah. I speak from experience. You know, it's, it's, it's hard. And sometimes you, you, you can go between two stones, but, uh, one might have leaned a little bit since last year, or, or, uh, you know, be very touchy, and you, you just hit, like, the base, you don't even hit the gravestone. And it'll just knock it just enough, and there goes the headstone. So it's, uh...
As you can, as you can see, he's insured and everything, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and he seems to have found a niche that, uh, as much as I tried, there wasn't anybody else that I could find. And, and like Plasberg Monument, I called them twice, and they said they'd call back, and they didn't. They, basically, the person who answered said they're probably too busy anyway, but they wouldn't pass the message on, so. The only other people I could think of
This didn't get understood.
That would do more than one area cemetery, and they're busy.
So you're looking for a motion to approve this invoice twenty-four eleven, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the invoice twenty-four eleven to have Pine Haven Cemetery Services perform the detailed work as indicated in this invoice. And this is dated April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, and the amount?
Correct.
Four thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second. Thank you. Any further discussion? No, I would welcome a roll call.
Councilmember Southway?
Aye.
Councilmember Bory?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Supervisor Trombley?
Aye. Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll let him know that right away, so he can make a plan of when he's starting. This may have to be, happy tables, doesn't get put in here if you're not comfortable with it. Were you copied with the information for, from Chimera to replace all of our keypads?
We've emailed it.
I emailed it, right?
With that.
With this?
Mm-hmm.
Did you all have a chance to look at it?
Pardon.
Okay, so the, here it is in a nutshell. We're having trouble with one of the keypads, one of the, um, one of the decor. And also, we continually having trouble with the, uh, fire alarm thing. Monitor, uh, device, whatever it is. Sarah got a quote from Chimera, who, that's who we use to, uh, maintain our equipment that we already had, right? Remember, we hired them to maintain the current equipment and keep it going. What they're recommending is, um, that one network panel, which I believe was sort of, I think that was for the fire, doesn't matter though, one network panel, three keypads, at twenty-five, it'd be two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then, we're asking to also do an optional, uh, add-on, which is three wireless two-button holds, which are total four hundred and ninety-four dollars. What that is, those are panic buttons.
Okay.
One for the town clerk, one for the secretary bookkeeper, and one for the justice clerk. I think that's a really
So a total of three?
Yep. Yeah. I think it's, I, I think it's required by itself, in today's standards, in today's world. So, we have a bit of toll, you know, I guess we gotta do that.
Three thousand fifty-seven dollars.
So, and none of this is, there's no reoccurring cost? That's a one-time, right?
Yeah, it's just a charge.
I just wondered if there was something like software or stuff.
We, no, that's still, that one meeting. And, um, you know, we currently have a contract with them for, for the maintenance coverage.
Right.
And they've been very good.
And, and that won't change our security provider? This is just replacing
Right.
But, you know, I mean, like
They are our provider now.
Yeah, so that's, that's important, yes.
Yeah, no, it won't change, it's just replacing the equipment that is, could be us trouble, it's
And how old's the equipment, you know?
It's, it's pretty old, I remember when they replaced it, and it was at least five or six years, at least five or six years old, they replaced those pads.
It must have been, before Sarah, she's better, like, five or six, hasn't she?
Yeah, yeah.
It was before that.
Yeah, it was before that, it was, uh, I mean, it's just regular routine maintenance, so. You know, it's the kind of thing, if it's due, it's due, you don't wanna make
Do you wanna see this, if you have any time to test?
Yeah, I wanna look at it, please.
You know, I'm, uh, you know, if you make a mistake and, and the pad is, is old, and, and not working properly, or, or preventive maintenance, either. You know, if it's not working properly, that's the problem. That's a big problem, and I like the extra ski fobs.
Yeah.
I, you know, a lot of You know, a lot of times people are working alone and, and somebody comes in, you don't know what's gonna happen.
You're talking about the panic button?
Panic button.
Yes.
Yeah, they call them key fobs.
Well, the reason I pointed that out was there was an additional add-on for remote access. And Sarah, I feel we really don't need that.
Remote access.
On your phone.
Oh, on your phone, but yeah, these are just something you might put on your keyring or something, or, right?
No, I think they go under the desk.
Okay, yeah, it would work too. Would that work?
And that would come out of, that would come out of the contingency fund, by the way.
That work for you? I mean.
In regards to budgeting?
Yeah.
So the maintenance that they currently do would not impact what's here because they didn't install what was here? So they're, if what, if they're installing this, does their maintenance contract now would include that? The maintenance of this equipment and?
Correct.
Because basically it sounds like they're just wanting to put in all this stuff.
Yeah, because what it is, is that, that one keypad will not accept any more digits. And so we have a new person, a new town working in the court. I can't use her code because it won't accept any more numbers.
And where will the three panic buttons go? Who will have access to them?
Town, town clerk's office, secretary's office, and.
Nobody record?
Justice's court.
Everybody?
Yep. So if you, if you're good with the expenditure. Sorry, I didn't make it onto that. That should have been number eight.
So you've both seen it? Or would you like to view it?
Take a look for a second.
I've got one here.
Here.
I have one more.
If this is the recommendation and it is a necessity, well, I guess it's hard to argue with, we need it, so.
Yeah, it's, it is broke, so we need to fix it.
Could it turn around time to have this in places a lot? What are they looking at?
You know, I don't know if Sarah told me that or not. My, my guess is based on the response that they've been doing. If the equipment's in stock, it'll be here in a week. I mean, they're very, when we call with a problem, you know, like a door out of adjustment.
Right.
Contact out of adjustment or anything, I mean, they're here the next day. They've been awesome.
So I'm not sure. How long's it been acting up?
Close to a month.
Yeah, I better get it. Do they know what the longevity of this is? Anything they'd be putting in?
Don't know. I don't look into that.
Okay.
Hopefully longer than what the last ones were. I, that's a guess made as well, my question, right?
Technology moves on too, that's the other problem, you know. What the patrol family, they want.
What's, what's installed today is outdated tomorrow. Almost, right?
Yeah, almost, literally. You can't do something about it sometimes.
That's true.
Yeah, I, I think that's, security's very important. Up here, there's.
It's a gotta have.
That's what's wrong. Uh, there's, there's no other area that would need the, the remote alarm button that you could think of?
I don't think so. Those, those are intended for dealing with, you know.
With someone.
Individuals.
Yeah, I think individuals that are upset. I mean, the, the court is probably the most important place to have.
Well, that's the only, that's where.
But I also think they have a lot of people that come through this store.
Well, with your doors having access, you know, being able to come in both, I think it's wise that, you know.
I, I would say probably twenty-five percent of the folks that come here for, looking for the court.
Correct.
Come through this store.
Right, right.
Would the assessors office be something or is that not? You know, and that's separate and cut off, but.
It'd be an additional seventy-nine dollars.
I don't, could we ask Tim if he feels it's necessary or not? I mean, he would know. I mean, I say that because that's a separate.
If we do that, approve, add seventy-nine to the total and we'll prove.
I mean, you think about it, he's, he's in a room, somebody goes in, they close the door and lock it.
Thirty-one, thirty-six.
Not getting suggestions.
Thirty-one, thirty-six.
So that's four remote.
And, and, and it's not just Tim that works there. Robin too.
Tracy.
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 Tracy. Same thing.
Does it change or, or improvement? Is something like this classified for any of the monies that the court has received over the grant money over the course of years? Does this fall under that as a, no?
Yeah, no, you, you could have probably put it, it needs to, it'll be identified when he applies. So the only way you would get that in there now is wait until he applies, it's coming here.
It's not an option.
And I, and I'd also reach out to your insurance carrier, this might reduce your premium. So you might make back part of this money.
On the panic buttons, maybe?
Yeah.
Well.
I think so. Even the updew. Cause you got something, so.
That's good.
You can save four hundred bucks or.
Yep.
A hundred dollars, whatever it is, it can save something. And it really does help them out, I mean, the insurance company, because we're doing, go after.
I'll, I'll have her call, I should have to call the, the add-on anyways for liability, so I'll have her invite her. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll check. If you want to do a motion, please, of up to, this is thirty-one, thirty-six. If we just say thirty-one fifty, just. Or you can say thirty-one, thirty-six in case I'm wrong here. We had, it says seventy-nine dollars each for the. I'm reading it correctly. Yeah, so it says seventy-nine each. So it should be that total, with whatever rounded up, it's not gonna hurt. And then we'll find out if, I'll get with Sarah and Tim and Thursday and we'll find out if that's a good idea. I think it is, if you're good with it, we'll just add it in.
Yeah, they, I remember in some of the schools, they had problems because the doors have locks. And the bad person got in the room, closed the door and locked it. You know, it's like, oh, okay.
Now you're, now you're in a bad spot.
Yeah, now you're in a bad spot.
I thi, I think it's worth doing, I mean, by Sarah and Tim.
And we could always reevaluate that, that, that virtual keypad if it, down the road. I just don't like the idea of those reoccurring costs.
Yeah, that's it.
You know, they're talking about eight dollars per month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's ninety.
It's ninety-six annually.
Right.
And then, which is eight dollars per month, so I.
Well, it's like they, they know the right amount so that you'll, you won't say too much, but not so much that you'll turn it down. They've got it figured out.
Well, Sarah says she doesn't really need it. She doesn't need to do it through that, through her phone. She does this all the time.
She, so, actually, I mean, she'd be the one who'd be most likely, because you, you don't want other people really.
Using that knowledge.
Yeah, so, uh, ask her if it's necessary, if it's not, but.
Well, she said it's not.
I don't think it is.
No, no, she said it's not. That's why they didn't put it in the total.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so what do you need a motion?
Need a motion for the second, a roll call.
I'll make a motion to expend up to thirty-one thousand, thirty-one hundred. Okay.
That's for the night. We have a night watch guard that's gonna be here for good benefits, so.
That's a security officer.
We can hire one.
That's what I had written in the first line, the second line, I added that.
I'll let you, I'll let you read that.
I wrote it down right the first time, the second time I wrote down the extra one.
Right.
It was fun. I just wanted to see if you'd catch it, that's all.
We're weak.
That got our attention.
I'd like to say the resolution is that we appropriate up to thirty-one hundred dollars to improve.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-one, thirty-six.
There you go.
To install three security pads and three remote call buttons.
Possibly four.
Possibly four, for want of a better term, call button, emergency button, whatever.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Please, please, a roll call.
Councilmember Southwick?
Aye.
Councilmember Bory?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Supervisor Chumby?
Aye. Thank you, most curious.
I had sent an email out to see if anybody wanted to go to this housing symposium with me. Is anyone interested? Is anyone? I'd like to register, no. I think you have, I'll try to, I didn't check your email.
I, I, I do, you know, and, and part of that, this security piece, I think I remember reading the email, but I don't think I got the actual attachment.
Well, correct. Okay. So. So the symposium is being held, I believe it's, it's the town of Blasberg that's kind of heading this up. And it's being held on the base and, venue, it's on there. So it's free for supervisors and mayors. Anyone else attends, such as trustees or council members, is twenty dollars. It's very minimal. So I've been waiting to find out if anybody would join me. It's during the day, I know it's impossible for you, Jason. Also for Dorsey. But if you'd like to, I think, I'd like to have somebody with me, because it's always a lot of information to take in. There's gonna be like little work groups as well, work sessions, so two heads are better than one, let's just put it that way. You wanna see it?
No, I, I, I saw it and, given my situation and I have further work done, which I.
With your teeth.
Yeah, if they can't fix it, then they gotta put that post in your, uh, gum. And then they gotta put the tooth in. After that, after the back deals, they gotta.
It's a process.
Probably, yeah, the process, and it's like, eh. And I, I don't know what they're gonna do, you know.
Or when?
Or when, yes. This took a month, so.
Do you have time? Cause I don't see any time for this. I see dates, I don't see a time. It's, I think it's eight-thirty. Is there data for, what's the date again? May.
Twenty-third.
I can't help it, I haven't put it in my calendar yet. So it must be in his, it must be on the form.
Yeah, you can check and give, give me the times.
I believe it's, I'm quite certain it's like eight o'clock or eight-thirty in the morning.
Till.
Till one. Lunch is, I think, twelve to, twelve to one, because I know I'm gonna have to scoot at one o'clock.
Yep.
To get back here and get on the bus. I'm only taking the morning runoff, which I have scheduled. They've been really good to me for this type of stuff. Comes to the transportation department.
Yeah, I'll attend, please.
Okay, awesome. So that'll be two of us, thank you. Like I said, it's gonna be very useful to have both of us there instead of me trying to resolve it all. And probably very useful for us as we move forward. Uh, Champlain Fire Department, mark your calendars. This is the unofficial announcement. We will be getting an email later, May thirteenth. It's a Monday. That's a Monday, yes, I was just checking to make sure, so it's Monday, May thirteenth at twelve PM. I know.
I, it's, it's possible. I could, if I know that now, I could maybe work something out because that's right around lunchtime for me. So I might be able to scoot over for, for that and then scoot back. So it, it, it's not out of the realm of possible, I can.
It's not a great time for me, but I want to make it work.
Yeah.
I asked Chris last night and he told me this, this, I just found out last night. Think it'll be about an hour?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be about an hour or so.
Okay, I don't know if I could devote an hour, but I could probably do thirty minutes.
I mean, come, come one forty, I gotta be.
And this is for?
This is the groundbreaking for the Champlain Fire Department facility. In my entire district facility, excuse me. So, exciting times. And we'll need to get some photos. So please, I'll mark your calendars. He will be getting an email out, a formal invite to all of us. Need some discussion. I need your approval or disapproval, or how you feel about this. Alan would like to hire a summer, part-time employee to help with the, uh, the work that needs to be done around here, for example. There's painting, there's, you know, building maintenance that's been straggled a little bit. We've got a lot of park stuff to install, assemble. The mowing, assistant mowing, needed, he mentioned, like, he was a flyer, so, I don't know. He's just, he's just looking at.
How many hours would he?
Well, it had to be under thirty.
Was he looking full time?
What's that?
Was he looking forty hours or what's he?
No, he was in the part-time.
So like a fifteen hour, what?
Um, probably thirty, or, or just under.
Have we budgeted anything like that?
Well, we, no, we have not budgeted it. So when I sat with Sarah, and I can't give you the deep, the exact details how this laid out, but basically we've been running with one employee shy, right, since October. But now we're in the DB fund, because as you know, our, our funds roll spring.
Different times a year.
Different times a year. So the DB fund, there's about a little over a month's worth of that salary and benefit money. And then there was two other items, essentially, if we were to put them you know, twenty-nine or twenty-nine and a half hours per week, for twenty-two weeks. If we, if we kept them the whole time until they go back to their regular, their regular weeks when they flip, which is what Alan would like. It costs us about an additional two thousand dollars more than what we have accumulated. And that's not touching that A fund. I mean, that A fund is separate at this point, so we can't grab from that. That's where all the extra went. So I guess, you know, in order for him to he had, he had one employee that had applied, he's hoping would, would want this. If they don't want it, then I'm not sure if he has anybody else in mind or not.
This is the first time he's done that, if I recall. I haven't, I don't recall him ever asking for anybody to.
Well, no, no, but I think part of it is they cut down on the to, you know, they used to have more men in the.
Right, I get that. That's what I'm saying. But I don't ever remember him coming to us asking for additional assistance.
Well, yeah, I think this is just for like.
Well, they, they used to do it in the past, that's how Josh started, I guess, years ago, right?
Yeah, but that was under the different.
Way back.
Way back, before I was on.
They had different programs.
Do you have to have a special job description for this position?
Just the general labor?
It's just labor, it's a.
Just the general labor.
And labor, and labor as far as, um, because I went through that when we had to add that starting position.
Okay.
Through civil service, labor can operate, you know, pickups, the one-ton dump, the lawn mowers, the tractors. So in other words, you know, if we're in a pinch, you could. the lawn mowers, the tractors, so in other words, you know, if we're in a pinch, you could, when we have people on vacation, you could actually mow ditches. Can't operate any heavy equipment, as in excavators, yeah, back rows, those are, those types of things.
And, um. Kind of defeats purpose of a person working with the cemetery business in terms of learning the training for, you know, being able to.
Well, that could be what this person did.
That could be what this person does. Like, he could go help with that project, which.
There's at least a week.
Yeah, it's at least a week or so.
But then, if he's not here the next year, then we lose his training.
Well, we don't know. I mean, there, there's people that could retire, uh, and, and also we could end up doing a part-time employee for next year, you know, if this works out. I mean, a lot of the stuff, like, like, cutting brush and trim for cemeteries, you know, cutting the brush bag, mowing the lawn, uh, painting here, they change the light bulbs. I mean, you know, every, everything, e- even around here, you, you know, there's a lot that could be done around the town building that.
There's little things that, that.
Little thing.
They're on a list, yes.
Yeah, they, they, and, and the list could grow if we knew somebody was available. I, I, you know, it might be something for a trial. And then if that worked out, more in the future, we could do it. If it doesn't work out, then, you know, we don't, we don't go forth with it. I mean, Alan has cut the full-time labor for us with all the benefits, quite a, you know, uh, uh, quite, at least two people, so it's, it's saved us a lot of money.
And if we start, the thing is, we do have a lot of work this summer, especially if we, if we start construction on that Bob Ben project, you know, there's, there's holds up, holdups on me, on getting my hands on that funding. It's coming, but it's gonna take a while. Um, so at some point, when I get more of a definition of how long that'll be and what we're gonna do, we may pull from our, our budget and maybe start the excavating and, and putting the stone in and let it sit till next year. It might be a wise decision, I don't know. We'll have to figure this out as we go. But I'm still, I'm still working with Dazne. We're, we're in review, review process. Looking really, really good. I finally got all the right documents in front of them. Cause it went from one person to another, and then she grabbed the old folder and started reviewing the old stuff that is now obsolete. I had to start over again, like, wait, we've got the wrong stuff. What I learned is, from there, it goes to, uh, four other reviews. It's a long process. According to her, it's another four months minimum.
Okay. So this person would start at what for a wage? What are we looking at?
Alan would like twenty.
Okay. And because it's gonna be less than full-time, there's no other benefits?
What happens with the union?
Right.
I don't think it's a good problem. They've, they've had this before.
Well, that was.
And as long as it's part-time.
That was through, like, CETA or, or a different program they had back then for training. Uh, the state kicked in on that. Uh, that's been a long time.
Must be, we've heard of it.
Yeah, yes. I, I would think we should.
That's why I was saying, it would have to be.
It would have to be like twenty, twenty-five. It's gonna be like twenty-nine, twenty-nine and a half months.
Or, or less.
Or less.
Yeah. I, I mean, if, if.
I was just using that number for, uh.
Do flagging with it or something, because summer's the construction season, and that's when you have a lot more to do. In the winter, it's, you plow. Or you plow, there's, you know, you maintain the equipment, but there's not a lot you can do in the winter. In the summers, when you, when you're a busy beaver.
And then, as, Alan's point is, you know, Robbie takes like a month off.
Yes, and that's when everybody takes their vacations.
We've got Eric currently on disability. You know, everybody else takes a few weeks here and there.
Yeah.
You know, they're already planting around Memorial Day and July fourth, so.
They should.
Well, yeah.
They should, they should, right?
That's right.
So there's two weeks, there's two, two weeks lost there. So that's why he's looking for an extra pair of hands and.
And he's been good about doing the projects we've asked and to, to do, to fulfill.
Yeah, another one I'm thinking of is that interpretive panel. We need to get that out here. We gotta start working on that. Figuring out what we're, how much money we're spending on it when we're doing, but that'd be another project that could be utilized, something like that. I don't wanna say it like that, cause it's not gonna be just that one person doing that, it's just, we should have somebody else working with him, but.
Yeah. I mean, Alan's been good about doing everything that he needs to do. And we, we, we are the ones that add stuff to his, his plate, because there's no one else to do it. I mean, if it's to change the light bulbs, or paint, or do something with the railing out there, it's, Alan has to add it to his plate, and, uh, if he needs someone else to help, you know, in the sand, in the sand pit, you know, the weather's, has to work on the weather. I, I would try it as a trial, uh, maybe max twenty-five hours, if that, or, does anybody have?
I would say max twenty-nine and maybe target twenty-five. And then, at least if he's in the middle of something, some week, he needs the extra, you know, one.
So are we looking at a ten-week period?
I think the handbook puts a, puts a tax to it already. The handbook already limits us. If we're gonna keep it, if we're labeling it part-time, it's gotta be under thirty hours.
And, and for what period of time, term, ten weeks?
No, it's twenty-two is what he's looking for, if, if needed. He's looking to go right to November first, if needed.
Okay, so we're talking.
To November first? So you're looking at someone who.
I'm not saying that, that's.
Is not a, is not gonna be a.
Correct.
Student.
Possibly retiree, could be a number. And so we'd be looking somewhere in the area of twelve thousand dollars?
Thirteen.
Okay.
Max.
No, it's, it's, it's cheaper than a full-time employee.
No, nobody's done it, especially. At least that's what my wife says.
What do you think? Do we agree to try it?
It's cheaper than a full-time employee.
I, I, I don't know if you can say no. I mean, I, I think just not having the hands in there. And, uh, as you know, with summer, you got people going in a lot of different directions. Are, we're not doing anything with removal of trees and things this summer, like we did last year? So you don't have to provide a, a, a flagman and stuff?
That you know of.
That we know of. No, we do, we do have that ash tree management.
Right.
Which the grant is not approved, and I just chucked on that this week, because there was rumors out there that it was all approved, and I don't know. So they're hoping within the next couple of weeks to know that. So if we do, that's gonna be hired out to a contractor. You know, such as Richard, for example.
Correct. I know when he did work last summer, he recorded a flagman.
Yes, for help from us.
Yes, it could require that.
Then they wouldn't wanna take skilled, more skilled labor away.
Right, correct, especially.
Oh, that's the whole thing, yeah. And, and this is almost like being a training position to see, you know, this person in the future might be a good.
Well, I think that's what he's hoping to do, but it depends if, you know, this.
Right.
Whatever he has in mind, it's willing to work, you know, twenty-five to twenty-nine hours a week.
Does that, that doesn't put us into unemployment, uh, area, that, what do you have to work for, uh? To be eligible for unemployment?
I think you have to work one hundred and a half, one hundred and twenty.
I think it's twenty weeks, huh?
Oh, it is twenty. And, and the other thing, workers' comp.
Well, I mean, if the guy gets hurt, they have to check in.
I'll check on the duration in regards to.
Right, the law.
Being eligible for unemployment. I think it's twenty.
Yeah, that, that would be the only thing I'd watch out on, because then you end up paying for the, for a long time. I, I'd make a motion, man. If, if, do, do, anybody have any more questions for?
You can go ahead and put it on the floor anyway.
Yes, I'll, I'll make the motion that we duly a part-time employee for less, uh, for, I wanna say twenty weeks, but for what, for the, for, uh, a number of weeks that would be most beneficial to the town and the highway department, uh, at a rate not to exceed twenty dollars per hour. Forty hours per week.
Not to exceed twenty-nine.
Not to exceed twenty-nine hours per week. And, and this is a one-time trial. We're not, this is not a permanent thing in any way, shape or form. It's a good task too, because a lot of the stuff, like flagman, uh, cutting the brush at the cemetery, uh, helping somebody just move stuff, not.
Do we have a second? I'm gonna second it. I'll second. Thanks, Jason. Any further discussion?
I, I just wanna point out again, this is a one-time deal to see if it would work.
We're not adding a long-term position here.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, even painting and upkeep around this building is substantial. Cut, cutting the brush and, and things around the building, uh, maintaining windows, making sure they're clean. There's so many things.
And he'd be under the supervision of the highway department supervisor?
Correct.
Right?
Yeah. Who do you vote for?
Councilmember Southway?
Aye.
Councilmember Bory?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Supervisor Trumbull?
Aye.
Thank you. Next thing is, Brian, can, can you and I interest, I think since we looked at that water code.
Yeah.
Initially, I think the three of us should get together again to finalize how we're going to move forward. In which case it won't, there's no way I'll get that put together for, by doubt, for a meeting that we'll target June. Cause we have to, another revision of the local law. But I think Julie and I were hoping that if we can get that done now, all this goes into, uh, general code. Hopefully it doesn't attach a lot of money, having an additional revision on a revision. I'm hoping.
Well, once, once you've got, I mean, you might as well use it in the general code.
That's what I'm saying. I'm hoping it doesn't cost us more, cause we missed that, but it's just adding, I think it's just adding definitions. Please look at your copies again and.
Yeah, which, I mean, in theory, shouldn't cost a lot, I mean.
That's why I'm trying to do it that way, instead of, cause otherwise it affects like a dozen pages. And that's, they have to write a lot, it's gonna cost money. So if we put it in one section.
Yeah. Yes.
Should be cheaper. It should work. Kinda like what we did with consolidated, super did with consolidated water.
Yes.
Same thing.
Yes.
Okay, any other business? Our next business meeting is scheduled for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. And welcome, we motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, or any.
I'll second if anyone else wants. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, everyone. And, uh, good to have you back, Eric.
Thank you.
I was surprised when I saw that from you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry to be back. There's all the good things in our country.